And as our first order of business, we will accept the draft minutes. Are there any corrections, changes to minutes? If there are none, motion to approve.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I do think there are no motion remarks even on the agenda, which is perfect. So I will accept to say happy first day this spring. Very nice. Good evening, everybody. I just have a few brief highlights to share with all of you this evening because we've got very important items on the agenda as it relates to that year's budget as well as to the BAC referendum. But I'd be remiss not to start off by saying how fortunate we are to have Dr. Tween on our board agenda this evening for the board to consider as our next elementary school leadership administration and policy from Ford University and five years' experience as an elementary school AP just north of here. She began her teaching career at the Chapel School right here in Bronxville, and that resulted in her position there as an early child director. Prior to pursuing her public school administration, I will be sending out a letter to the elementary school parent community tomorrow and working with the PTA to create moments for parents to meet and to get to know her this spring. Welcome, Dr. Tween.
Welcome.
And how about our eighth graders? For the first time since before COVID, our eighth graders returned to Washington DC. It was a meaningful experience for all, and I wanted to give a shout out to one of our board members, Christina Skinner, because as a result of her connections, our students were able to be in the Supreme Court and hear a lecture. And that, in addition to the sights they were able to see, the museums, was really a very meaningful three days. One quick story, which I think is an indication of how well this trip went, was when they were checking out of the hotel this morning, the gentleman at the front desk commented that they never would have known that there were 110 students there those past three days. Says a lot. And then, as Mr. Makora, our middle school principal, was exiting the hotel, he was stopped by an elderly couple who said to him, "Young man." And he immediately was thrilled. They said, "Do you work with these children?" And they went on to say that they have worked with children for over 40 years and have been at the hotel for the past couple of days. And they said to Joe, "Whatever you're all doing, please continue to do because our world needs more kids like yours."
Amazing. Amazing.
Right? We have good kids, so thank you to the parents for that. All right. Top that.
It's gonna be part of that.
Good.
I don't think I've ever had that amount of praise thrown onto me.
And also, you can't say "Tom" once.
Well, yeah. Well, I can beat him a little bit to get some credit. So, starting off, since the last board meeting over a month ago in February, which unfortunately I did not have the pleasure of attending, there have been a number of important events in the high school. First, in the middle of February, we had our winter break, which was much needed because now it's starting to get nice, but at the time, not very nice in Bronxville. Towards the end of February, the senior class took a trip to Broadway. Both levels of English had read The Great Gatsby earlier in the year, so we all went to the musical adaptation on Broadway for a whole day off, which seniors always like, a nice day off in the second semester. Beginning of May, the annual Spring Into the Arts celebration started, and it started off with performances at the theater in town. I actually had the pleasure of going. There is a bunch of music, there is other things, and I don't know if you've noticed, there's art being displayed as well, all a part of this annual celebration of young artists in Bronxville. Consecutive days earlier in the month, we had both a high school volleyball and dodgeball tournament, with the dodgeball tournament fundraising for a local boy suffering with leukemia, all going to a good cause. Winter sports began to come to an end, starting at the end of February, but most recently, our track and field team just finished up, which should speak to their success, but I'm going to continue to speak to it because it's quite incredible. Multiple people represented their respective teams, boys and girls, at Nationals, and multiple school records were set. It was really an incredible year for winter track and field. And then, just to wrap it up, this Friday, so tomorrow, we have superintendent's conference day off, which is pretty convenient, and especially being a senior, a nice Friday off before we get our nice spring break in two weeks.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Matthew.
And I'm sure you have homework to do.
Yeah. And basketball.
There we go. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thanks for watching.
Before we go on to the personnel agenda, this is the board meeting where I asked the board to consider amending our current calendar, the 24-25 calendar. As negotiated with the BTA, if we use less than four emergency closing days, which is typically snow days, not flood-related days, then we can add a day on to the calendar. So we have had one school closing due to snow, and I'm so pleased to say that it was indeed icy that day. And therefore, I'm asking you to consider adding Monday, April 21st, which is the Monday following Easter and following the spring break. So I would ask you to consider that resolution this evening. Unless there's any questions, could we have a motion? Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so on to the personnel agenda. I have already spoken about Dr. Tween, and welcome again. The other one I want to just spend a moment on is that one of our middle school science teachers, Jean Windells, it's bittersweet to accept her resignation for the purpose of retirement. She has served in the Bronxville Middle School for 19 years as a science teacher, and for the last 18 years, Jean has also served as the advisor, coach, of our middle school science Olympiad team. It's under her leadership and guidance that our students, every year, come home after earning top rankings. This year was no exception, with 10 of our middle school students ranking in five different categories. So a special thank you to Jean for her 19 years of dedicated service to our middle school and to our middle school students. The other, we've had an opportunity to discuss in executive session, we have some leaves due to parent leave as well as medical leave, and some changes as it relates to leave replacements as a result. In addition, this is the board agenda where I ask you to appoint the election personnel for our annual school budget vote, board election, referendum, which this year is on May 20th. I'm asking you to consider items A through double B, please. And so, as Dr. Kelly said, we've had an opportunity to review and ask questions about these personnel items in executive session, and so, assuming there are no further questions, could we have a motion to approve items A through double B?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Dr. Tween. Dan, so Dan's going to again present our 2025-26 budget.
Yep.
And this will result in asking the board to consider the adoption of this budget. You want to start us off, Dan?
Sure. Tonight, we're presenting the proposed budget for the 2025-26 school year, which you will see is now under the tax, or at the tax levy cap, and obviously, we hope is ready for adoption by the board. Next slide, please, Connie. We are towards the end of the budget process, obviously, which began in earnest in November with enrollment projections, and, you know, we had had board input, requests from schools, any course of study or program revisions leading to staff and technology requests. Most of that stuff is constant year to year this time. We haven't really added anything. We think we're in a good spot that way. We've added a few positions and some programs the last few years. We're absorbing those. So we developed the proposed budget, and we spent a lot of time in December and January, you know, up until even a couple of weeks ago with the capital project, which you'll be hearing about later. So I think we're ready to recommend and adopt a budget tonight for a public hearing in May and a referendum on May 20th. Next slide, please, Connie. The proposed budget is now at $55,205,497, with a proposed tax levy at $48,160,497, resulting in a tax levy increase of 1.2%, and that is right at the tax levy cap, which is about a percentage point lower than anticipated this year as state aid for our last building project is finally kicking in. And as you can see from this chart, both the budget-to-budget increase and the tax levy increase are consistent with where we've come in in the last 15 years, probably on the low end for the tax levy change. Then we have a pie chart, which is a visual representation of how the budget is divided. As you can see, the blue shaded areas are set, which is 76% of our budget, consists of salaries and benefits for the staff to run the school. Beyond that, our next largest expenditure is for services we contract for, security, cleaning, insurance, transportation, et cetera. Then debt service and BOSI's costs for myriad of services, such as running our technology network, purchasing hardware and software, and professional development, and other educational services. And beyond those, the rest is only about 5%, consisting of supplies, equipment, textbooks, legal fees, special education tuition costs for students whose needs we can't meet in our school. So it's really a personnel, you know, we're in the business of educating kids, which is personnel-heavy, and that's where our money goes, most of our money goes. We're required to give you some data on estimated tax rates, which isn't very meaningful this year because there's a revaluation and everything's going to shift. So in calculating the impact on the taxpayer in terms of the tax rate, we begin with our proposed levy, divide that by the preliminary assessment role, which is up 6.36% through the revaluation to $3.68 billion. That gives us a tax rate of $13.08 per thousand of assessed value. The 4.85% reduction in the rate from 24-25 is due to the percent increase in the assessment role being higher than the projected levy increase at this point. And based on the 25-26 preliminary rate and the levy where they sit now, a homeowner whose property is assessed at $2 million in 2023 is paying, or for 2024, I'm sorry, is paying about $27,485 in school taxes, while a homeowner's property is assessed at $2 million in 2025 will pay about $26,154 in school taxes. Obviously, there's been a reassessment, so I advise all residents to see how their assessment changed, and this would be a factor in that calculation as well for individuals. Next slide, please. For historic perspective on that tax rate, we usually sit somewhere between 13 and 14 and a half percent, and that's, we're still right in that wheelhouse of the tax rate on the assessed value, on the assessment role. Next slide, please, shows our fund balance history.
Dan, just really quickly, 13 to 14 and a half percent. I think you meant 1.3 to 1.4%?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's right. $13.
That's right. I just didn't want the community to think.
No, nobody's ever paid 2% of their assessed value in school taxes.
Exactly. That's right.
It's always between 1.3 and 1.4.
I think it's important to note that we've come in at a pretty low number this year, and our fiscal responsibility has resulted in having not an increase if it were just the school taxes we were looking at.
Thank you for quelling the panic. I almost started. So historically, our fund balance, we're pretty healthy. We're in a strong position compared to prior years at the moment. It's been planned by the board over the last few years to accumulate a little bit, to address capital needs, as addressed by our architects in our five-year capital plan. If the surplus grows throughout the rest of the year, it would increase this number. Conversely, if the surplus is less than anticipated, it would reduce this figure. To reiterate, we're looking at the likelihood of addressing capital needs in coming years, which you'll hear about a little later, and I would anticipate that the finance committee recommend that any surplus fund balance be allocated to the capital projects reserve or TRS reserve, which is still slightly underfunded. But you'll hear about where the current year sits in the, as far as surplus goes, a little later. We are required to disclose any planned contracts or leases, and this budget includes three planned multi-year contracts for leases for our network copiers, private school transportation, and our technology installment purchase agreement through BOSI's to continue our replacement cycle for Chromebooks, computers, and other technology infrastructure items. We're required to point these items out annually in our budget document, and I'm doing so here in the interest of transparency. The photocopy contract was bid competitively four years ago. This coming year should be the last year of that contract. Transportation contract was bid competitively last year and will be extended with a CPI increase, and the BOSI's installment purchase of technology is executed under either competitive bidding requirements or New York State contract pricing. That usually comes to the board in April and May.
Dan, the 750 for the transportation is an estimate.
It's an estimate.
Yeah. And these others are actual lease payments.
Yeah, those are lease payments. The transportation depends on who asks us before the April 1st deadline coming up for transportation to private schools, and the configuration of how we can put them on buses or public transportation.
Okay.
Have you received any applications or letters from families yet about?
Sure. We've been collecting them probably for the last two weeks and will for the next two weeks. Well, probably the next month.
Do we know what we're up to?
Next two weeks. Don't. Not at the moment. Haven't looked at it yet. And then, this year, we are also adding, which you'll hear about a little later, a proposition for, on a referendum this May, to include the use of $5 million of our $5 million capital projects reserve for upgrades to the facility, as outlined later tonight, and authorization to borrow another $15 million and pay that off over time to fund some much-needed renovations, which you'll hear about a little later.
Capital Reserve had like $6 million and change in there. Is there like, you want to keep some kind of minimum balance in that capital reserve just in case anything happens?
Yeah.
You have any kind of emergency?
We're, it had, we got it up to about $6.5 million at the end of last year. Roughly 1.2 of that estimated is going to be committed to the projects we're doing this summer, so I took that out of projection, but, you know, we're going to add to it a little bit. In the next line, you see unallocated current year surplus, you know, that, you know, that can add to that number. And actually, this is based on last month's projections, so the current month, which I did a couple of days ago, even added to that number. So we're going to, you know, we'll probably be somewhere between $5.5 and $6 million before we do the $5 million transfer for the project. So that, you know, we'll be starting with a million, and I like to keep, you'd like to keep at least a million in there because that gives us a good head start at replacing our next field. We always have an eye on those fields because, you know, we're in the unfortunate position where they're not on a replace one every six-year cycle. They're about two or three years apart, just the way things worked out when we were finally able to put the new haze field in. So we'd like to keep an eye on those. So I think, you know, starting off with almost a million dollars after we start the next capital project cycle, I think, you know, puts us in a good position because I would estimate those field, haze field is probably 2029, we're looking at replacing that. So that gives us another three, four years to accumulate money to cover that and then start saving for chambers. So with that, I think there's a resolution for the board to adopt the budget.
Any further discussion or questions? We appreciate all your work on the budget, Dan.
I appreciate, you know, all the board's finance committee's work and the board's attendance over the last, I think we're in a good spot. You know, we're going to come up on some tough budget years, but...
Yeah. But the good news is together, we've started looking ahead, and we're trying to address things before they back us into a corner in the out years.
Exactly.
Could we have a motion to approve, approving, recommending?
Adopting.
Adopting.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, everyone.
All right. Don't breathe yet.
No. Take a sip.
Dan, take a sip of water. We're actually very excited to share with the community the next capital project. Really, I'm so appreciative to both the finance and facility committees who have worked really all year, going on tours, meeting with architects, exploring ways to still address the needs and yet do so in a fiscally responsible manner. So we've asked Dan tonight to present on what we think is a responsible next capital project, which we're very excited focuses on our elementary school, which we have not done in a long time. So if you could walk us through that, Dan?
And last time we went through this process, about seven or eight years ago, we had a lot of sexy slides to show and renderings of auditorium lobbies and innovation centers and things of that nature. We don't have sexy slides this time, unfortunately. Two years ago, land associates, as required by SED, there are consulting architects, updated our five-year capital plan with assistance from the administration, and it identified almost $60 million worth of work that could be done around the buildings and grounds. The board has worked diligently through both the finance committee and the facilities committee to understand, prioritize, and refine most of the most needed work and the potential budget for that work. We are now down to about $20 million, which may, you know, may be further refined, and when I say refined, I mean hopefully reduced, as we continue through the estimation and budgeting process, but we're, you know, the number we're asking for is $20 million at the moment. You know, we're, probably the earliest we could bid would be the winter of 2026, but it could be 2027 if the funding is approved by voters in this May. And the following slides show needs in seven areas. First areas, the largest identified need is masonry and perhaps structural steel repair in the D Wing, which is the elementary school, along with the replacement of 60-year-old windows, some gutter repair, and exterior door frames. And I have a couple of pictures, which are not as, you know, not as nice as the rendering as we had a few years ago, of just of deteriorating brickwork and some cracks in masonry next couple, Connie. The one that's really concerning and which is the big budget item is the slide on the left. We tried to get an angle where you can kind of see it bowing out around structural steel, which is, seems to be pushing out some of the brickwork. It's not a dangerous condition, but we're trying to address it before it becomes one. So we had to take down brick, and on the right is lintels, which is steel above windows. Some of those can be repaired, many of those have to be replaced. So it's, you know, it's all, you know, the kind of things you'd be doing to keep your own house standing as opposed to improvements. Then we have some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing improvements. One big ticket item is replacement of 12-unit ventilators in elementary classrooms that are over 60 years old. Then we have air conditioning in the band room, West Gym, and the chorus room. We hope to get some air conditioning in those rooms. And then, we were looking at air conditioning in the C Wing for the weight room and the cardio rooms. We've deferred those with the hope that maybe we can raise some money privately or address some of that through our maintenance budget over time. A couple of pictures of those unit ventilators. Next slide, please, Connie. Then we have, this is where we start getting in, besides the unit ventilators, we start getting into the classrooms. Most of the flooring replacement also includes asbestos abatement, as the original layers below the current deteriorating layers are most likely asbestos. There's some pictures to follow consistent with the current conditions that we want to address. You know, we have cracking tiles, but, you know, below, go to the next one, Connie, where we have the transition. Note the door saddle that raises the classroom floor due to layers of flooring underneath. You know, our goal is to get those up and level the floor and start anew after abating asbestos. And when I say abating asbestos, we have asbestos floor tiles underneath most of the classrooms, if not all. It's not dangerous condition, it's not friable, it's not flaking, nobody's inhaling anything. At the moment, it's encapsulated by four layers above it, so it's not dangerous at all, but anytime we do work, we seek to abate asbestos where we can. And as the board toured the D Wing over the last few months, a constant theme developed. When I say D Wing, I refer mostly to the elementary school. Not much has been done to update many of the classrooms since they were originally constructed in the '60s. And if we're addressing the floors in many of these classrooms and the ceilings, the board thought it would be prudent, you know, to look at the walls and the casework and again, ceilings at the same time. Got a couple of slides showing conditions of, let's see, some ceilings and walls and Yeah, that's pretty much original stuff from 60 years ago. Next slide, please, Connie. Then we have some bathroom improvements. The PTA did a project... The PTA did a project, I guess it's over ten years ago now, where they did four or five bathrooms for us, and they, they're still in good shape, but we still have a lot more we need to address. I have some uncomfortable slides with those, but, you know, we hope to address some of these issues. Next slide, please, Connie. We, you know, in continuation of the updating theme in the D wing, the casework, which is the built-in storage in the classrooms, we included an average of fifty linear feet in about, in twenty-four classrooms. So that will really be a refresher. And next slide, please. Those got moved around a little bit, but saw the casework earlier. So, oh, we have a few miscellaneous things. Boys locker room. We were gonna, we started out thinking we'd do a lot of work in the boys' and girls' locker rooms, but when we toured them, we saw that the tile and the fixtures were in very good shape. Actually, they're, they're in great shape. We did notice that the boys' locker room only had one toilet and three showers in terms of modern locker room usage. Trading a shower stall or two for an additional toilet would be much more useful. And configuring the lockers could be addressed in the future through the maintenance budget as that would be a relatively low-cost item. We also have two fire doors that are pre-existing and we want to bring up to modern codes. The main elevator needs to be refurbished. We've refined that number down from a replacement to refurbishing, and we also need to replace and widen some sidewalks. Midland Avenue is not too bad. I walked those yesterday. Meadow Avenue is pretty bad. I mean, there's, there's a few tripping hazards that I think we need to address immediately with some of those trees pushing up slabs and cracking them. But Midland, Midland Avenue could be wider, so that would probably be most of the focus.
Midland?
I'm sorry, Meadow Avenue.
Okay.
Midland, Midland looked pretty good.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Maybe replace a few squares here and there, but other than that, it was, seemed wide enough, it seemed fine.
Yeah.
Meadow was narrow.
Really.
There was a, there was a, there was a sign that kind of came over the top of the sidewalk, where I almost hit my head on it, but, you know, there's a lot of work that can be done there, and I think that'll be the focus.
And just to clear the lower half of Meadow, Meadow, the top half is pretty good.
Yeah, starting, starting from beyond the faculty lot and up, you know, going by chamber steel, really, under those trees there. So that gives us a construction subtotal of thirteen point nine million dollars. Now, since we'll be doing this, this work in two or three years from now, price escalation figure of ten and a quarter percent is put on top of that, and also contingency of ten percent for unplanned items. So that brings our estimated total to almost sixteen point nine million. On top of that, we have soft costs with the architect and construction manager, legal, insurance, inspections, furniture, other expenses, and then a reserve on top of that of about five percent for a total soft, projected soft cost of three point one million for a total of twenty million dollars. And, you know, I think, judging by the bids we just opened, it looks to be a conservative budget at this point, which I'm hopeful.
Good, good.
You know, I'm hopeful we won't get to twenty million dollars.
Yeah.
I think the contingencies are very healthy. I think the escalation number's healthy. You know, I think the number's twenty million and we work down from here.
Yeah, and just to reinforce, like, the timeline, you know, we're talking about starting the project in two years, so we'd issue the bonds whenever the market is right to issue the bonds. But it, it may not be for a little while.
Recent bonds for, for district rated like us gone up, gone off in like three, three point one percent. I think we could, if we were gonna issue today, we'd probably be about three, maybe a little under, because our auctions are always well-subscribed. But, you know, a couple of Fed rate cuts between now and then, and, you know, we'd be in better shape.
But the point being, we're, we're starting to solicit bids. We have hired the owner's rep.
Yep.
And there, this will continue to be an iterative process.
Oh, yeah.
Before we finalize the work.
Yep. And I have a few slides to explain the financing very quickly. So if you borrow fifteen million dollars, here's, here's an amortization and rate matrix. I think our sweet spot would probably, right now, we're looking at about twenty years at three percent, which gives us an annual debt service of about a million dollars a year. If rates improve, we might be able to either get less of a payment over twenty years or cut the amortization to fifteen years. You know, the finance committee will be looking at that, you know, continuously over the next two or three years until the bonds are issued. Next slide. But that's our target. We're looking for roughly a million dollars in debt service. So based on that, you can see right from this slide, the top of the red where the blue arrow on the left is, that's our current debt service is about two point seven something million. Next year, we're, we're going down, actually, but we're keeping the budget where it is to increase our debt service fund balance to be able to handle either twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or twenty-eight, twenty-nine when we issue the bonds. If we, if we wait till twenty-eight, twenty-nine, you know, if, if the yield curve allows us to wait, you know, we're gonna strike, strike while the iron's hot when rates get low, but then we, we're not gonna have an issue where our debt service would ramp up for a year or two. But if we do issue bonds in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we have a plan to deal with that through debt service fund balance that we've been accumulating. So the, what I'd like to say is that by 2029, thirty, and thirty, thirty-one, our debt service would be roughly in the neighborhood of where it is now.
Okay.
And then, then waiting till about 2034 till it drops significantly for the next project. And to probably include some roofs and windows and whatever. But, you know, I think we always look to try and not have debt service be a whip saw for, for our tax levy. We try to avoid that. Next slide, please, Connie. So the next steps. The board tonight, we're asking to adopt a budget referendum with the one point two percent tax levy increase. We're adopting, hopefully, funding for a referendum question for a capital plan. May eighth, the public hearing on the budget and the capital plan. May twentieth, referendum on the budget and the capital plan. If the referendum passes, the architect will work on schematic designs for SED approval. Designs and approval could take nearly a year. If all goes well, and we have a phased plan, construction could begin as early as the summer of twenty-six, and then continue to twenty-seven, or it could be twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But, and there are certain things that could happen during the year, but a lot of it can't. You know, we have to meticulously plan our summers for the construction. And that's it.
Yep, and we've had a lot of discussion about this already, the workshops and committee meetings, but are there any other questions? So just plain English, today, we estimate the project will be twenty million. It's gonna continue to iterate.
Yep.
By the time we're ready to start. What we're gonna be asking for is authorization to, to fund a project up to twenty million, to take five million of our reserve and apply it toward the project, our capital reserve, and we estimate that we would need to borrow, we may need to borrow fifteen million dollars.
Yep, maximum fifty.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking for authorization for. If we bring in less, we'll borrow less.
Yep. All right, if there's any further questions, could we have a motion to adopt the resolution as written in the agenda?
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. All right, now we can move to the current year, which is, you know, we're heading in the right direction. Expenditure projection continues to be conservative and remains little changed from the previous month. They continue to be tight, not projecting very much of a surplus there. Fairly comfortable with where overall expenditures are looking at this point for the full year. And, you know, when, once we get to June and start closing purchase orders and, you know, freezing accounts, you know, it will grow from here through the accumulation of just hundreds of budget accounts, small surpluses and hundreds of accounts. However, we're still dealing with the impact of the BTA settlement in the last few inflationary years, which is why expenditures are tight. We used to get most of our surplus from expenditures in the past, believe it or not. However, recent news on revenues continues to be positive, along with interest income, regular education tuition students and special education tuition for students we take in from other districts. We've now also completed invoicing our cost of health services provided to St. Joseph's and Chapel School, which we bill whatever district send their students to those schools for those health services we provided those schools. And that's coming in at a little surplus as well, which will overcome a slight shortfall in borderline properties that we estimated, and increased the surplus projection from the prior, prior month. We are now forecasting about eight hundred and sixty-four thousand in revenue surplus with another hundred thousand or so coming from expenditures, so we're approaching a million dollars. You know, half of that's committed to cover the fund balance allocation to offset the tax levy on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget and, but the, I think the bottom line is it'll help keep our reserves robust as we head into the next building project and beyond. I do have a financial action item, too. We have bid awards for the pump enclosure and the security vestibule, and this was, this came in positive. A, the numbers were good, below our budget, about where I was hoping they'd come in, you know, because I wanted to save a little, because both of these bids have decent contingencies in them. I wouldn't expect either one to go over, even with a few change orders. But even better is the contractor, is the same contractor for both of them. So we're only gonna be dealing with one guy this summer, which is huge. I kind of planned that we'd have, you know, a guy inside the building and working with somebody else outside, but it's gonna be the same company, which I'm very, very happy about, as is Mike Lee.
And they'll have enough manpower, for lack of a better term?
Yeah.
To be able to cover both projects simultaneously?
Well, if they don't, it's only one guy we have to yell at. But they, they said they don't see any issues. They think, you know, relatively, it's a small, quick project inside, and outside they have, we can give them full run of that space beginning mid-June. So should be, should be easy, but you never know. So I'd ask the board, and, and we had good subscription, we had good response to the bid, and we had four or five bidders for each project, which we were happy about. As usual, bids are all over the map, but, but we had, and these numbers were vetted by, were reviewed by the architect with the contractor, so there's no mistakes in them. They just wanted the work.
And I know you're always thorough in vetting and references.
Yes.
So we know this contractor, Perotti, and...
Yep, they're working in Mamaroneck right now. Mamaroneck have good things to say about them.
They had good reviews?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
So can we have a, a motion to accept the bids, right?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Making a note, give them a letter to proceed tomorrow?
And just to note that the foundation had contributed significantly to the security vestibule.
Oh, absolutely.
Which allowed us to have to borrow less.
Yep, transfer less, we're not borrowing.
Transfer, very good, transfer less.
No, they, they saw the opportunity to increase the security as something within their purview, and as always, they step up to the plate and help us out. So we're very grateful to them. A short facilities report, grounds are looking good going into spring. You know, I'm really excited about the next month when anything starts to turn green, see the benefits of the board and the PTA's commitments to improving our grounds. You know, it's something the whole village can enjoy, not just people with kids in the school. We did have a rain event that triggered pumps, and they worked automatically as designed. You know, when, when I heard them go on and I walked out there and there was nobody out there at the pumps, that was great. Because usually Mike Lee's running around in his raincoat and, you know, you know, he's got a rake trying to clear screens and everything, but none of that, everything was, everything was fine.
I think, you know, I walked on Midland going on that pathway, going towards where like that, have a lot of equipment and stuff like that.
Yep.
Everything looks great back there.
Yeah.
And other times, you know, in the past years, you go up by there, it looks pretty ratty. And it looks great.
Yep. Wait till, you know, everything turns green and it blooms and fills in, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna be really nice. No facilities action items, we'll be busy gearing up for the summer projects. That's it. Yes, we have, we do have three other action items. We have athletic mergers to approve, girls' swimming and diving, which Bronxville hosts, girls' volleyball hosted by Mount Vernon, boys' and girls' skiing hosted by Bronxville, boys' swim and dive hosted by New Rochelle, boys' ice hockey hosted by Bronxville, girls' ice hockey hosted by New Rochelle, and softball with Tucko as the host. Again, it's great that a small school like Bronxville can give our athletes opportunities in sports that we would not be able to field teams ourself. So mergers are great.
Any questions?
We can take them all at the same time, I'll just go through them one at a time. Yeah, French exchange. You went to one at a time?
Yeah.
Motion? Who you want to?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right. We have the French exchange that is gonna be, I believe, in the fall. Let's see, Toby gave me, yeah, October.
Well, they'll come here in...
Yeah, they come here in October, and we go in March, March nineteenth, April fourth next year. Toby gave, Toby Gillan, who runs it, gave us, gave the board a wealth of information on it, so the board approves it so that we can insure it for the most part. Once the board approves it, they're covered by our insurance policy.
Yeah, so great, we're getting this back online. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve the French exchange for next fall?
Second.
All in favor?
All right, unfortunately, Brad... All right, unfortunately, Brad's in school, so I'm gonna take a crack at this one. This is authorizing the RIC One Risk Operations Center to enter into data privacy agreements on our behalf. This would serve to streamline data privacy agreements as required by law or SED regulations. Again, to be streamlined through BOSIs, saving us time and resources locally to collect this stuff ourselves. And there's no cost to this. It's just, we just need authorization from the board to allow someone else to collect this for us and monitor it.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand what this is.
You and me both.
So let me, let me take a shot at it.
Oh, please.
So we are required to comply with ED two-D law, which is basically ensuring our students' privacy when we introduce any new kind of software. And it's quite a rigorous process that you have to go through with any new software to ensure that it's compliant with ED two-D law. And Brad, as our Director of Technology, has to do that single-handedly. This allows us to hire BOSIs to play that role. So they will be on the front line, making sure that any software is compliant. And then we will have a list that we can choose from if we're interested in a new software. If are the, the software we're interested isn't on that list, then BOSIs will begin that negotiation with that software company.
Okay.
That's exactly what I said.
Just wondering who's gonna field questions on that.
So are we entering into an agreement with BOSIs?
Yeah, it's just a resolution. They get a copy of the resolution authorizing them to do this on our behalf.
Okay.
At no cost to us.
Yeah.
It's already part of our BOSIs budget, probably, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Any further questions? There is none. Could we get a motion to approve this arrangement?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
And that's it?
Are there any committee chairs that wish to share anything at this meeting?
PTA had their annual meeting with the elementary school, middle school, and high school last Friday. Sarah was there, Eddie was there, I was there. Phenomenal job. They just did a great job. Ann Meyer actually gave a presentation on AI and how it affects our schools. And phenomenal presentation, Ann, just a great job. Lila Lovell does a great job. Amy Howard, I think, was responsible for, you know, this whole lobby looked amazing. She made a juice mix, you know, she, a juice press of like celery, apple, ginger. It was awesome. It was great, it was great event. Really well done.
Terrific turnout?
Yeah.
Over a hundred people?
Like a hundred people came, yeah.
Yeah, and I think in previous years, I think Sarah, this would be a night event, like at seven o'clock at the, at the field club. And not enough people, and it was just really well-tended.
That's great.
For the effort they put in, it was really nice to see how many people turned out to support them in the PTA and, and listen to Ann's presentation. It's great, yeah, super. A lot of positive feedback, Ann.
And the best was the, the Q and A part, it just kept going, going, going.
Shut it down, sorry.
And shut it down, because like, well, that, that's like, it's like the AI onion, right? Once you start peeling, you just, you just keep going, then, then someone else thinks of another question. And it's just that onion that... But I think the most important thing is addressing how it's gonna benefit our kids, how our kids can use it constructively, and really use it as a tool, which is great.
Did you want to add anything about strategy?
Yes, so the Strategy and Curriculum Committee met on Tuesday morning with Dr. Kelly and Ann and a member of the foundation's grant committee. And we met to discuss the grants for consideration in the curriculum arena, written by our teachers and administrators across the three schools. So phonics books in the elementary school, professional development in the elementary school, Spanish, science, and English. Many elective, civil discourse, our new technology fund, a lot of grants written in the AI arena. And there were a few questions by the foundation and by the board, and we're waiting for a few answers, but all really wonderful initiatives. And as always, we're super grateful for the foundation for supporting these initiatives, and we're grateful for all our teachers and administrators coming up with these wonderful extras that are, that will, our children will benefit from. So it was a very, very productive meeting. It was my first one with the grants committee, and it's just amazing that the work that they do and everyone in the schooling does. So, so they'll get approved after, we're waiting for approval from the foundation after some of the questions have been answered.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
And we had the Joint Finance Facilities Committee meeting. It was really mainly just to continue refining the list of capital projects.
Yep.
Really constructive. You know, as we continue trying to whittle down the items on this project, the focus has come on the elementary school, which is great. I think the elementary school families are gonna be so happy and supportive of this. It's really gonna be a major facelift for the elementary school, which is well overdue. You know, that's our, that's our foundation, so it's exciting. And Dan, thank you for all the work that you've done. And a special shout-out to Mike Lee, who's not here tonight, but we wouldn't have gotten this far without him, for sure. So thanks, guys, for that, and the finance committee for, you know, crunching all the numbers for us. We've got the foundation, as Sarah mentioned, is in the middle of their grant review process. They're also doing some vetting of some potential nominees for the foundation for next year, which is exciting. So, you know, we're very grateful for all the help that they give us. So thank you to the foundation. Health and safety committee met. A lot of sensitive topics that I can't go into in public, but one that I need to go into is head lice in the elementary school.
The highlight of every meeting.
You know, some of those parents come in there and they're checking themselves, I think. So if your, if your, if your child has, has head lice, don't send them to school. Get them checked, and get their siblings checked before you send them to school. And I think that...
Was it professional development?
Professional development, not, not too much to report on that. Just, you know, continuing with, with all the good stuff that they do and making sure that the teachers get the, get the help they need.
Okay.
Through the foundation or, you know, through the school.
Okay, great. So next up, our next regular meeting is Tuesday, April twenty-second. And, and then our May meeting will be May eighth, where we'll have a, a public hearing on the budget and opportunity to, I think, ask questions. And so we now come to the public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to be...
Brian's shaking his head.
Public comment, no one here in the room, no one in TV land. And so with that, if there's no further business, could we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Kathy, we can go with you.